Angelo Forenzy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I think the other thing to consider here also, or Town Meeting Members, is that sometimes these increases for, believe it or not, are compensated by increases of efficiency, increases in additional responsibility, and so forth. That accounted for some of the grade changes, but there's also, you know, efficiencies that go on the, all of the departments, and I've been pleasantly surprised at how hard they work at trying to get more out of each hour of labor that we pay for. And so, that's another point that's in that, that we take into consideration when we look at those, the amount of increases that we give. If we can do things like consolidated responsibilities, have people a little bit more flexibility in terms of the work that they do, and the work that they're allowed to do under the contracts, then we can afford to pay a little bit more money for that.
Is there other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Krimmons. Pardon my mistake. Article 6, Dan Leclair.
Dan Leclair, Town Meeting Member at Large, moved that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $20,400 to provide non-contributory pensions for eligible employees of any and all of the town departments as provided in the applicable sections of Chapter 32 of the general laws, as may be determined from time to time by the retirement board. Said sum be raised by general tax and expended under direction of the retirement board.
Warrant Committee.
Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 7, Mr. Leclair.
Moved that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $4,088,459 to provide contributory pensions and expenses in connection therewith, in accordance with applicable provisions of Chapter 32 of the general laws. Said sum to be raised by general tax and expended under the direction of the retirement board.
Warrant Committee.
The Warrant Committee recommends favorable action, and did you want me to?
Yes. Pre-statement, Mr. Curtis.
Okay. This is the town's annual contribution to our pension, pensions for retired employees. It's a two-year cycle. The pension plan is administered by the retirement board. The retirement board, every two years engages an actuary to study what we need to pay both for the immediate payout for this year's retirement, as well as our contribution to fully funding our retirement system by, I believe, the year 2026. So, we're in year two of the current two-year cycle. This is the amount of money that's been determined by the retirement board and approved by the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, and we basically don't have any choice.
Thank you. Discussion, please, Mr. Dan.
Mark D'Andrea, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I think we all realize that this is one of the major expenses that we have reoccurring every year. And just so we can have an idea of what the increases are per year, could someone give us an estimate of how much this amount is over what we appropriated last year, and what the progression might be in the years ahead, next few years going forward?
Who can answer that? No, yes. Barbara Hag, the Town Accountant.
Barbara Hag, Town Accountant. I'm also a member of the retirement board, and I think I'm going to be the designated speaker tonight for that department. The retirement is going up 4.6 percent between this year and last year. The increase, the prior year, though, was significantly more because, again, based on what Warrant Committee Chair Curtis said, the first year of the cycle, we had to make up some money. The progression going forward would be at least 4 percent based on a study of how our funding mechanism was to be set up originally. But that was if we received the annual rate of return that we were hoping for. As you know, anybody who has a 401K or 457 plan, the stock market's a bit in the tank this year. So, we don't know what to expect next year. We're very hopeful. We did very well last year. You know, we're hopeful.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other discussion? Oops. Ms. Bass, this time.
Yes, this is Ms. Bass. Please, Ms. Hag, if you'd come back. If I understand correctly, the $4 million being appropriated this year is partly to cover the difference between what we've earned on our investments and what is needed to be paid the retirees, and partly to work towards fully funding by, is it, 2026? So, could you break that down? Could you tell us, first, how much we earned on our investments? How much needs to be added to the fund so that we'll be fully funding it? How much, you know, has to be paid in, paid out in pensions?
I don't have all the figures in front of me, but I'll give this a shot.
Okay.
We're approximately 53 percent funded. The pension fund was established about, in the 1930s, and the first 20, 30 years, we did nothing but pay as you go. So, we paid the pensions that came due that year. So, when we started funding it, which was in the Ducakis era, as soon as, you know, everybody remembers that. What happened was, we are funding what accrued valuation for the current year for all of our current employees, as well as trying to pay off all of the liability that we did not recognize all the prior years. So, we're whittling this down, partly because the population is decreasing in that regard. And the other is, the contributions, at one point, were only 5 percent. So, if I had been working here 20 years ago, I would have been putting in 5 percent of my pay. But I didn't. I came to work for City and Towns about 25 years ago, and I'm putting in 7 percent of my first $30,000, and 9 percent for every dollar after that. The new employees coming in are paying 9 percent, and then 11 percent for everything over $30,000. So, our cost for our retirees that will only put in 5 percent is much higher than our current costs. I'm not sure. That's kind of hard to, hard to, because it's about different pieces here.
I understand. It would, yeah, I also wanted to know what, how we're doing on the investments. I mean, right, I have money in the market, too.
Well, our goal is to get at least 8 percent every year. Last year, we had over 10 percent return, which wasn't bad considering the last few months in the year were really shaky for everybody. But we still get 10 percent, and our year ends on December 31st. So, it was 10.6 percent, I believe. Good returns. It's not, it has not been a good return in the first three months of the year, but we're still ahead of PRIT, or the PRIM Fund, I guess it's called. They lost 4.3 percent. They had a negative 4.3 percent return the first three months. We're a negative 3.3 percent. So, it's about, it's about a little over 1 percent. They're doing worse than we are by at least 1 percent.
Thank you. Could I suggest that, in the future, this kind of be spelled out on paper, then? Nobody has to stand up and ask these questions, and, because it is useful. I mean, $4 million is not a trivial amount of money out of our budget, and it's useful to know how it's all working out.
I will try. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Mr. White.
Joe White, Precinct 4. I'd like, for anybody in this room who doesn't know it, but I'm aware that we, the retirees, do not get 4.6 percent. That 4.6 is something that you're looking for in this fund. It's not a wage increase for retirees.
Correct. That's the growth between one year and the next.
Right, right. I just, when I heard that, I don't know if other people who are not retired would understand that. The town's getting 3.5 percent, and the guy sitting at home is getting 4.6, and that's not the case.
It's actually very interesting, because people will say, well, the retirees get a COLA. Well, they get a COLA only in the first $12,000 that they make. So, the maximum increase every year is $360 a year. The maximum increase for retiree, which does not cover the increase in the health insurance cost. So, I'm throwing that out just for interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 8, Mr. Forenzy.
Angelo Forenzy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Article 8, move that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $401,161 for the repair, improvement, and construction of highway within the town. Said sum to be offset by reimbursement from the Commonwealth as provided by Chapter 90 of the general laws, and acts, in amendment thereof, and in addition thereto, the same to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Warrant Committee.
The Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Capital Budget.
Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Younger, did you want to say a word about this? Or Mr. Forenzy, would you?
Well, simply, this is the money that we're collecting from the state under Chapter 90 funds, which is the state, the money the state gives us, and we're just allocating it for the expense to be used on the construction of roads and highways in the town.
Mr. White.
Joe White, Precinct 4. Under another article, there is a proposed amendment to limit details to 1 percent. Does that fall under this article? Should the other article pass?
No, that's separate from this article.
Separate articles.
Separate article entirely, does not apply to this article.
Thank you.
And just as a point of information, should the override pass, we would have the 2.5 million, plus the million, plus, if this was the year in which we did it, plus an additional $400,000 to spend.
Other discussion, Article 8. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 12, Carmen Catino.
Carmen Catino, new Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. Article 12, moved that pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2 of the general laws, the following revolving account be authorized for FY09 as set forth in Article 12 of the warrant for this meeting, and that the following town departments and committees be, and hereby are, authorized to expend for program expenditures the following sums from revolving funds. Youth Commission, $5,000; Counseling on Aging, $50,000; Belmont Culture and Council, $15,000; Conservation Commission, $10,000; and Board of Liberty Trustees, $10,000.
Warrant Committee.
The Warrant Committee recommends favorable action unanimously, and then we just want to reiterate or point out that these are not appropriations. These are funds that are funded through revenues that are specific to the organizations, and they develop on their own, and then they're allowed to spend them without having to come to town meeting and ask for specific permission to do so.
Discussion on Article 12. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 11, Ralph Jones.
Ralph Jones, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, and member of the Board of Selectmen. Article 11, move that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $4,964,193 from the accounts classified as Water Enterprise Fund pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 F 1/2 of the general laws for water service. Said sum to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. Said appropriation to be funded by a transfer from retained earnings of $550,004,564,193 from water revenues, less $150,000 in water indirect costs being appropriated under Article 4.
Warrant Committee.
Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Capital Budget.
Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommended favorable action.
Is there a discussion on this motion? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Mr. Jones.
Moved that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $6,881,317 from the accounts classified as Sewer and Stormwater Enterprise Fund pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 F 1/2 of the general laws for sewer and stormwater service. Said sum to be expended in the direction of the Board of Selectmen, and appropriation to be funded by a transfer from retained earnings of $576,138, and $6,425,179 of sewer revenues, less $120,000 in sewer indirect costs being appropriated under Article 4.
The Warrant Committee.
Unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the Capital Budget Committee.
Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Discussion on this motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 5, Mr. Curtis.
Bill Curtis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, and Chair of the Warrant Committee, moved that there be appropriated and paid to the elected officers of the town as salaries for the financial year commencing July 1, 2007. The amount set opposite the name of each as follows. Town Moderator, $200. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, $5,000. Other two selectmen, $4,500 each. Town Clerk, $80,697. Town Treasurer, $84,027. Chairman of the Board of Assessors, $3,030. Second Assessor, $2,424. Third Assessor, $2,196, for a total of $186,574. And that the sum of $186,574 be raised by general tax, and that in consideration of the salaries determined as a forset, or in case of appoint of offices as determined by the selectmen, all fees which have heretofore been paid by statute to the town clerk, treasurer, tax collector, and any other officers shall be paid by them upon their receipt into the town treasury.
The Warrant Committee report.
Warrant Committee unanimously recommended favorable action. And, shall I discuss this for?
Yes, please.
Okay. The, this is an annual article. It comes up every year, and the, except for the town clerk and the town treasurer, the salaries have been the same since I've been on the Warrant Committee. So, the two that vary are the town clerk and the town treasurer. And prior to my coming on the Warrant Committee about seven or eight years ago, the Warrant Committee established a policy for determining the salaries of the town clerk and town treasurer. And that basically is that a survey should be done annually of the appropriate neighboring towns of the town clerk and the town treasurer, determining what's being paid to those offices in those towns. Take the average of the towns, and if our town treasurer or town clerk is below the average, we apply a 4 percent increment to, so that person can come to the average, and then there'd be another 4 percent pay raise applied to, as a sort of cost of living increment for those elected offices. So, if you're, the basic rule is if you're below the average, you would get an eight, up to an 8 percent pay raise to bring you to the average, the component of the step increase, if you will, plus the 4 percent pay raise. If you are at or above the average, you would get a 4 percent pay raise. So, applying those, that policy, survey was done of Arlington, Burlington, Watertown, Wellesley, Weston, and Winchester, as well as Lexington, and determined that the treasurer average was $86,466. The clerk average was $74,371, meaning that the treasurer was below, the clerk was above. So, the treasurer's pay was, we're recommending, frankly, I mean, the Warrant Committee recommends the town meeting. So, what we're recommending, the town meeting, is that the treasurer's pay be increased to $84,027, and the town clerk to $80,697.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
William Green, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. First, I want to thank all the elected officials for the excellent work they do, and for many of them, very meager salaries indeed.
You notice the Warrant Committee is zero here, right?
And the Warrant Committee, I particularly thank the Chair of the Warrant Committee for his excellent service at a very appropriate rate. I, I wanted to ask, though, for many of these offices, I believe that the main compensation is actually not those very small salaries, but potentially health insurance benefits and maybe retirement? I don't know. And I just want to be clarified that.
Well, first of all, they do, I think each of these offices is entitled to health insurance. My understanding is that the only individuals currently using health insurance are the clerk and treasurer.
No.
Either way?
Not so? Oh, just the clerk.
Angelo Forenzy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Actually, I'm on health insurance as well. It turned out that I was eligible for health insurance through the town, through my wife's retirement policy, and rather than have a family plan, it was cheaper for the town and for us to have two individual plans, so I switched to an individual plan.
Mr. Green, does that end?
Sorry, can you comment about whether there's any significant retirement expenses for this? I don't know anything about it.
I'm not sure.
I got my total retirement statement, actually, today. I think it was $51.
All right. So, this is not, that's not an issue. So, at least in the past, I believe that people have had health insurance costs, again, that are much higher than salaries. I would just suggest as a, as a proposal, the Warrant Committee in future years, that we might try to shift the balance for, particularly for offices that are not as involved, actually, as Board of Selectmen, but some of the other offices are not, are not that much time, to try to shift it, to make, actually pay them a salary that's more reasonable, and then cut the health insurance liability to the town.
Is the health insurance a bylaw?
Yeah. It's a state statute.
It's state law? Okay. It's a state statute? Okay. Well, then, there's an answer there. In other words...
So, we can pay somebody, but we call it a halftime position, and we don't have to pay them the health insurance? Is that...
Go ahead. Go to the microphone. Mr. Hyam?
James Hyam, Precinct 1, Warrant Committee. The difference is that for regular employees, if they work less than 20 hours a week, they are not entitled to benefits. By the wisdom of the legislature, the elected officials can get health insurance benefits even if they work only a few hours a week. As a result of a rather long campaign by the Warrant Committee, no non-full-time elected official is presently getting any health insurance benefits.
Through the generosity and kind-heartedness of the elected officials, I should acknowledge them.
Ms. Blyburg.
Mr. Moderator, Sally Blyburg, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I'm curious about whether the issue involving our town clerk, Dolores Keefe, has been resolved adequately. She raised it at Warrant Night, and I'm just curious if that has been resolved.
Mr. Curtis?
I was in Utah. Well, no, Jim, that's fine. Basically, the Warrant Committee policy is as I described it, and this is what was followed this year. What we will do, I'd like to make sure next year that we are doing a little better job of communicating both to the town clerk and the town treasurer about what our, what our survey is and what the numbers are. So, I think that we should have a little more transparent process between our committee and those two elected officials. You're supposed to do the recognizing of the people.
Mr. Mercy.
Donald Mercy, Precinct 8. These salaries of the other elected officials, the moderator, the selectman, et cetera, I haven't seen raises in those areas for years. And particularly the selectmen, I guess, is almost, becomes a full-time job, and there's no increase there at all, even to pay their gas to get to the town hall. And I don't, I don't know if the Warrant Committee has considered changing those, and have you compared them with other towns? As you do all these salaries, you compare to other towns, you compare our town with other towns of similar size?
Well, we haven't been asked by anyone of these officials to change the salary, so part of what we do is based on people asking us to do things. We haven't, so we haven't been asked by anyone, and we should, I suppose, thank them for not asking us.
Well, I don't like, I don't like to spend, I don't like to spend money, but I don't really think it's fair to somebody to work for me for nothing either. And I don't have anybody working for me for nothing. And I think it's, it's, I think somebody outside of the selectmen has got to come forward, which might be the Warrant Committee, and do it as fair. You do it with the other, and I'm not so sure, sure on some of these salary plans, because I have been out in the field to find out if the salaries in the other areas are competitive salaries or not, or they just copy what somebody else is doing.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a useful thing to think about. I will simply, again, from my own personal thing, is that public service is public service, and it doesn't often come with a high salary. The school committee and the Warrant Committees are, as I've said before, not on here at all. And, you know, it's, it's, it's part of what you do. And we have not been asked by the selectmen to increase their stipends, and it hasn't been a, has simply not come up as a topic at a Warrant Committee meeting this year since I've been on the committee.
Well, the moderator's salary, I think, was increased by 100 percent a few years ago.
That's why I ran for the job.
I'm sure it is. Well, maybe you might give that consideration in all fairness and come back and tell us later on what you find, what you find.
Okay.
Gentlemen.
Vincent Stanton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Just in listening to you describe the formula for determining the salary of the clerk and the treasurer, it's striking that there's no mention of performance or contrasting the specific duties in Belmont versus the other towns that form the basis of comparison. In most jobs, performance, you know, might be the major part of, you know, a change in compensation. I realize that makes it far more complicated, and, but it, just sitting, listening to you describe the formula...
Let me say for the record, the Warrant Committee thinks both the town clerk and the town treasurer are doing a fabulous job.
Yes.
And the question about performance, and we're dealing with elected officials, is really pretty delicate. And I don't think the Warrant Committee's not got a lot of sentiment for changing the formula and trying to develop a performance-based system for those two offices. And I will also say that we could do a better job in our surveys of trying to figure out which town clerks and town treasurers do which kinds of duties, and that's one of the things I want to work on next year, is just getting a better survey of the local towns.
Any other discussion on this article? We'll vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Go to Article 10. This will be the final article that we're going to consider tonight, and we'll see where we are. I'm not going to go, have us go past 11 o'clock. I hope we can complete it before that. Mr. Leclair?
Dan Leclair, town meeting member at large. Article 10 moved that the sum of $2,174,000 be and hereby is appropriated to purchase public safety equipment, site improvements, public works, equipment, and furnishings and equipment for town facilities and consulting services to construct public ways and for building and facility and public works construction, and for major maintenance and alterations, including design work as follows. Public safety equipment, digital portable radios for police, phase two, $38,000. Antenna site generator, $18,000. Radio system upgrade for fire, phase two, $75,000. Subtotal, $131,000. Computer equipment, infrastructure, add, update foreign language lab, $28,000. Data integration and recovery, phase two for the town, $80,000. Virtualized backend service, phase two for the town, $30,000, for a subtotal of $300, $138,000. Departmental equipment, backup generators, library, Homer Building, and, library and Homer Building, $47,000. Cemetery, replace riding lawnmower, $12,000. Cemetery, replace dump truck, $56,000. Fire, replace utility truck, nine, excuse me, highway, replace dump truck, $56,000. Fire, replace utility trucks, $9,500. Fire, replace staff vehicle, $44,000, for a total of $224,500. Building and facility and public works construction, fifth year of a fifth, five-year replacement program, translucent panels, $100,000. Building security, Homer Building, $50,000. Building security, elementary schools, $150,000. HVAC work, police station, $35,000. School building envelope, Burbank front entrance, flagstone and steps, $55,000. Multiple school masonry wall patching, $55,000. High school repointing, $81,000, for a subtotal of $526,000. Site improvements, resurface and restripe running track, $103,000, $103,500, excuse me. Infrastructure and construction, pavement and sidewalk management program, $1,051,000. Grand total, $2174,000. Said sums to be expended under the direction of the board of selectmen and library trustees and the school committee is appropriated, is appropriate, and that said sums be hereby raised as follows. $2174,000 by general tax and by transfer of $100,000 from the capital endowment fund, and that the town accountant be and hereby is authorized to make the transfers on the books of the town. Now, there's going to be an amendment, I understand.
Well, the problem with the amendment, we're discussing this article tonight, and the amendments were not submitted in a timely enough fashion for discussion tonight.
That won't happen tonight, okay? Ms. Bruch, thankfully, will answer any detailed questions.
Let me ask the warrant committee vote first.
The warrant committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the capital budget committee?
Capital budget committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Ms. Bruch.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Bruch, town meeting member, precinct two, and chairman of the capital budget committee. Let me run through these briefly for you, and then you can ask your detailed questions. Under public safety equipment, there are two separate purchases of radios. One is for the police department, one is for the fire department. These are to replace all of our radios in another year, I believe it is, or two years. The frequency in the band is going to change. Our radios had to be done, so we did this in two phases. We began it last year, and this is the second year. 2009 will be the second year of that phase, and then that will be complete. And the third item under the public safety equipment is the antenna site generator. When we went to construct the cemetery, we moved the antenna site that is there for our public safety communications, and we have learned that, that, that antenna, the generator for the antenna is no longer, can no longer carry the load. So the generator itself is in good condition, and we will keep it and hopefully be able to reuse it somewhere else. However, we need a larger generator for that site, and so that's, that purchase. Under computer equipment, the first item is to produce infrastructure to the foreign language lab. There is currently a foreign language lab which was donated to the high school many years ago by the Belmont Ed Foundation. This particular item is to support computer instruction, and that capability is not there now, so the capital budget committee is recommending that the infrastructure be put in for that, and then the equipment and those types of things that will be used will be donated, either from the Belmont Ed Foundation or from private donations. The second item is data integration and recovery. This is the second phase of a two-phased project. The first phase was a year ago for the school side, this is the town side, and basically what this is going to do is, is store the school and town data, and each, the town side will serve as the backup for the school side, the school side will serve as the backup for the town side, so it helps with a disaster recovery, it helps with a, a whole lot of things, and makes us far more efficient. And the third item under this is virtualized backend service. Again, the second phase of a two-phase project. A year ago, the project was for the school system, this year it's for the town side, and what this does is it runs a lot of servers on one box, and it therefore allows us to have fewer boxes, which saves energy, which saves money, and this also helps us a lot with our disaster recovery abilities. So this will complete that particular project also. Under departmental equipment, we are requesting to purchase generators for, basically for our data rooms in the library and at the Homer Building. There was a telephone failure a few months ago, and all of our telephone lines come through the Homer Building, and it turned out that the failure lasted longer than the backup battery, and therefore there was quite a significant problem, and while we had recognized a year ago that it would be nice to have a generator, we now know that it is essential to have a generator. The good thing about this is it happened on a Sunday afternoon, so the town services were not disrupted. There was some disruption to some communication with the state and public safety, but that had, that particular piece has been rectified anyway, but we would like to get this going now, as soon as possible. We are replacing the cemetery lawnmower. The current lawnmower is 15 years old and is not configured for the new cemetery, so this one will take care of mowing the lawn in our new cemetery. We have a dump truck, truck that is being replaced for the cemetery, and that is going to replace the 1992 vehicle. We are also going to replace a dump truck in the highway department, which is a 1999 vehicle, and then that vehicle will be reconfigured for use by the fire department, which is the next item you see. The fire department replaced a utility truck. The fire department has a utility truck that actually is responsible for transporting the technical rescue trailer, and that is really at the very end of its service. We knew that the highway department had a vehicle that was going to be able to do the job with some reconfiguration, so it made more sense to spend $9,500 to reconfigure that vehicle than it did to spend $50,000 to buy the fire department a new rescue trailer. So that's what we did. And the shift commander's vehicle for the fire department is the staff vehicle that is being replaced this year. The vehicle that is currently being used will then roll down to a second use within the department, and, and it will sort of cascade down that way. The shift commander's vehicle is normally replaced on a three-year schedule because that is what has proven to be most cost-effective. However, we did not, we were not able to fund this last year, so this request is, is back this year, and we're trying to fund it this year. The translucent panel program is the fourth year of a five-year program, and this is something that has, this five-year program has really, I believe we're about in our 10th year on this. It's something that got pushed to the end many times, and so we didn't fund it for a few years. We've gotten back to it. It's these translucent panels, really on the fieldhouse end of the high school, many of them have, have broken, and they really need to be replaced. Building security for both the Homer Building and the elementary schools, this is part of a six-year project to make all of our buildings more secure. Last year, we did the first phase, which was a couple of buildings at the town hall complex. It was assumed at that time that we would be able to do the Homer Building as part of that project. However, when the bids came in, we realized that we did not have enough funding to do that, and so the Homer Building, which should have been done in the '08 funding, will be done this year in this funding. As far as the elementary schools go, we right now are requesting funding for three of the elementary schools. This figure is higher than the figure we had last year for the same reason as the, the town buildings. It just was a higher figure than we anticipated it was a year ago. We are not at this time doing the Wellington School, however, we have requested that the school department bid the Wellington School as an alternate, and if we do not have successful passage of a debt exclusion in the fall for the Wellington, then the Wellington, then what we would do is come to a town meeting in the fall and ask for additional funds to do the Wellington. We don't want to let the Wellington go without this, however, if everything goes the way we really hope, the Wellington will be under construction next summer, and that would be about the time that this would all be in place, so it doesn't make any sense to, to do the funding for this right now. The school building envelope is new this year. This is a study that was done a year ago, studying all of the exterior of all of the school buildings. We also have a study that's been done of a few of the town buildings, and what we would like to do is roll this into one program, similar to the roof replacement program that we had for the past 10 years. We would love to be able to set aside a certain amount of money every year and have the most needy things on the list be taken care of, as we did with the roofs. This year, the items, they're actually on the next page of your motions, the items under the envelope are the Burbank front entrance, the flagstone steps, the multiple school masonry wall patching, which, which is most of the schools, and basically that's repointing, and repointing in the high school. Under site improvements, you will recall that about seven years ago, we replaced the track at the high school with a beautiful new track. We knew at that time that we had to resurface it every six to eight years. As a town, we made the commitment to the taxpayer that we would take care of this track, and that we would do the maintenance and the replacement when it was needed. So that is why this request is before us now. This is when we should be doing it, this is when we're going to do it. The final item under infrastructure and construction is the pavement and sidewalk management money. This is $1,051,000, the $51,000 representing the 2.5% cumulative, cumulatively. This money is money that's been set aside by the capital budget committee since the override in 2001. This money will continue to be set aside regardless of what happens with the override in a month, June 9. This money will continue to be set aside, $1 million, from capital funds for pavement management.
Thank you, Ms. Bruch. Discussion. Ms. Bowler?
Rosemary Burke, precinct, precinct two. I have a proposed amendment.
Yeah, the problem, as we discussed, is that the amendment was not filed in a timely enough fashion according to our rules. Friday was not timely for a Monday deliberation. As I indicated to you, if this amendment, if this article were discussed on Wednesday, it would have qualified.
So you've moved it to Monday? No.
I didn't move anything to Monday. We've been going in the order of the articles, as, and as I indicated to you, if we, I sent you an email today, if we got to Article 10 today, then I couldn't accept the amendment. If, if we didn't get to Article 10, then on Wednesday I could.
I find that really astonishing.
We have rules, and one of the things I'm committed to do is to follow the rules. We can review those rules, and, but there are three business days, you and I have talked about this, there are...
Yes.
The requirement is three business days prior to the, the, the end of closer business, three business days prior to the day of the meeting, and you filed this on Friday afternoons, so essentially that's one business day.
Yeah, I, I know all that, Mr. Moderator, and there wasn't, a, we had a discussion. I was going to file an amendment to Article 25, and you did indicate that that was clearly going to be discussed tonight, and that you indicated to me that it was in all likelihood, more than likely, that Article 10 would be discussed Wednesday, and that most likely that I would be able to propose this amendment in good faith. I have, I submitted this all in a timely fashion.
It was not a timely fashion for discussion tonight, Ms. Burke.
Well, this is a simple amendment, it is not a complicated amendment. The prior moderator allowed simple amendments.
This is not a simple amendment, this is a substantive amendment. I had expected, we have moved through these articles very quickly, in my experience in town meeting, we normally would not have reached Article 10 tonight, so I told you I thought it would be Wednesday, but I couldn't be sure of that. I sent you an email this afternoon reminding you that if this came up tonight, that I could not accept the amendment because it would violate our procedures.
Well, I'm really, truly, very disappointed. This is, you know, the voters should know, voters should know that my amendment would, if it had been looked upon favorably by town meeting, would have a significant impact on how pavement management money is spent in an appropriate fashion. This town spends a lot of time talking about being fiscally responsible, and my proposed amendment, I think, would have gone a long way to really putting some teeth into that with regards to police details, and I'm very disappointed that it won't be brought forward.
Mr. Mercy?
Donald Mercy, precinct eight. You mentioned to us that the antenna site generator was being taken offline because you needed something bigger, and you said it was a good generator. Was there any reason why that generator was not moved down and, and used for your backup generators for the library and, or the Homer Building?
We're, we're still investigating whether or not it can be used at the library, it is not large enough for the Homer Building.
What is the, how much power does the library need? The library doesn't need much power.
It's not the library, it's the server room in the library. It's, it's the head, the head end for all of the town's computer equipment is in the library. It's that particular space.
But within the Homer Building, the main thing you're interested in is backing up the phone system, is that right?
Um...
That's what you just told us, it was a phone system you were concerned with.
Well, that's part of it, that is part of it, yes. The Homer, the Homer Building is a larger, is a much larger generator than the one needed at the library. We are looking at whether or not the antenna generator can be reused at the library.
My first reaction is that if you're only trying to back up the, the phone system, that you don't need much power to back up the phone system. And you, you might be trying to back up the whole building, and that's a different issue.
Thank you. Dave Pedo will address this.
Hi, I'm Dave Pedo, I'm the IT manager for the town. Mr. Mercy, the, the Homer Building isn't just, doesn't just have the phone system in there, it's the phone system and the number of servers, and that is the town's server farm. That's where all the, the main computers are.
She just told us that the servers were at the library, now where are they?
The, the, the library contains a room that has our main switch, that, and switch gear. That is where all the signals come from the schools and the town, and get routed to the different areas and the different buildings in the town. There is a AC unit in that room to keep the equipment cool. So the, in all likelihood, that generator from the antenna site will be sufficient. We're checking on the gas pressure that's available there.
It's running by natural gas?
Yes.
How many kilowatts, did you have, somebody...
I'm not sure we need to get in this level of discussion.
Excuse me?
I hope, I hope you're looking closely at the kilowatts and not, not going to let this generator go because you want to do something extra in buying another generator.
Oh, absolutely. We're checking the, we have the, the...
Power, just the necessary equipment, not the building?
No, it's not for the building, it's just for that one room.
Is there any other question? No, all right, Mr. White.
Mr. Moderator, Joe White...
town meeting member a chance to be heard and to be judged. I guess we're going to judge that by this motion.
Well, you need to, you didn't, you need to, there wasn't a, there was not a motion, so I can't accept that as a motion.
How would you like me to say it as a motion? Be it moved, that we...
No, you need to have it in writing. You need to have a specific time and place. If you do that, I'll accept the motion.
Would you allow me the time to do that, or you want to continue discussion?
Yes, I will. Other discussion, yes.
Hi, Chris McVeigh, precinct three, and this is a question related to the pavement and sidewalk management program. Maybe you can answer this, Pat, or it might need to come from Glenn or Peter. I made a, some constituents in precinct three called me over the winter, and we were very concerned about Upper Concord Avenue, up by the Belmont Hill Club and the cemetery and so forth. That typically is the way that we drive down to the center, and that road in particular was in horrible condition this past winter, and I've spoken to Glenn about it over the phone. But what I'm really, my question has to do with what is the, what is the plan for which roads are going to be worked on this coming fiscal year '09, and if there's a public process for residents to be able to, you know, put certain roads higher up on the priority list?
I will let Glenn answer that.
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Clancy, Director of Community Development. With all due respect, to answer the last question first, the idea of a pavement management program is to take all of the politics and all of the emotion out of that decision-making process. So is there a process for residents to get that directly involved? I believe the answer is no. I would like to speak directly to Concord Avenue. If it's okay, I'll sort of elaborate on the conversation that we had. Well, what we refer to as Upper Concord Avenue, which is the piece from the police station down to Mill Street, and then the lower portion of Upper Concord Avenue, which is the piece that's closer to the Mill Street end, very, very bad shape this winter. And, Chris, a lot of other people, via email and phone call, I heard from a lot of people about the condition of that pavement. In developing a five-year plan, factoring in an override and factoring in just the level of funding that we're getting now, Concord Avenue is five years out, at least. The reason being, the water main in Concord Avenue needs to be replaced. And this gets back to the discussion that we had earlier this evening about how we coordinate our work with utilities. I think it would be irresponsible for us to go in there this year or even next year and reconstruct Concord Avenue without looking at the utilities. And as I said, I haven't even looked at sewer at this point yet, because those decisions are made once the road is identified, but we already know because of the water main replacement program that the water main on Upper Concord Avenue needs to be replaced. And so, we're faced with a decision now, knowing what the water main replacement program has to do, knowing that as we pursue the state and federal funding to do the Tripella Road Belmont Street corridor, and knowing that there's going to be a substantial amount of water work required in the Tripella Road Belmont Street corridor, you can sort of look ahead and begin to see how the water main replacement program is going to lay out for the next few years. And so when you look at that and you factor in the concerns with Concord Avenue and the need to replace that water main, we've got some difficult decisions to make. And the decisions that I haven't made yet with Peter Castellano, we haven't talked in detail about how we can overcome the water main replacement issue on Concord Avenue. What I will say is that we have heard the complaints, and as I stand here before you, I am almost 100% assured that Concord Avenue is no longer five years out. We just need to come up with a way to overcome the utility issue. But I do also want to add, Grove Street, School Street, Golden Street, there are a lot of roads in town that are in almost as bad, if not as bad, condition as that portion of Concord Avenue, and even under an override scenario, the money only goes so far in the short term, and it's our challenge to try to balance all of those needs, utility, road construction and otherwise, to come up with a plan that addresses all of that.
Okay, well, thank you very much, but I also have to say that this is a highly-traveled road, as you know, and it's not just Belmont residents who are using it. It's, you know, Waltham, Lexington. It's, unfortunately, we have regional issues to deal with as well. And it's really unfortunate, as I think about the whole McLean project, that we couldn't have somehow had them, you know, help with the cost of that, in terms of the mitigation from that project. But I would just like to say, as a resident, as a town meeting member, precinct three, I used to use that road all the time, and I go Pleasant Street now because it's much more pleasant. But I would like to say, I'd like to have this higher up on the priority list, and I wanted to just state that publicly at town meeting.
Marion Scally, precinct two. I have a question on resurface and restripe running track. What kind of material did we use? What are we using? And why, in seven years, I just, I'm astounded that we have to replace it so soon. I go to a lot of track meets. My grandkids run everywhere. I wasn't aware that you had to replace it every seven years.
We're not replacing it, we're resurfacing it.
What are you resurfacing it with?
He's not there.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Castellano, Director of Public Works. As Pat mentioned earlier, when the track was installed, the standard procedure for a modern running track is to resurface it every six to eight years. To answer your question, there is an asphalt base, like a road. On top of that is a liquid polyurethane that dries, and on top of that, they add some colored rubber and spray it nice red, or there's choices actually. Then they have to come back and restripe it. That's standard, every six to eight years to keep the track in shape. They remember the old track was so bad, the track team could not use it.
Right.
To keep it in shape and so no one is injured and it's safe, and to protect our investment, we have to reinvest in it every six to eight years.
Okay.
I talked to the manufacturer today, actually, the person that built it and the company, and they said that the life of the track, because I was curious about this, is about 20, 15 to 20 years totally, with resurfacing every six to eight.
Wow. And this has nothing to do with that material they have found in some of the acrylic surfacing that they say is dangerous, so this will be fine then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Two different subjects.
Thank you.
Other discussion. Ms. Kerr.
Rosalie Kerr, town meeting member, precinct three. First, I just want to say one, make one comment about the capital budget report and the Warren Committee report. They were both excellent and really helped me understand the whole financial picture in a way that I never have before, so I really congratulate you on these materials. But, and I have one question because of the detailed information you gave. In the capital budget committee, in your report, you talked about a five-year, you gave your five-year projections. There's a line item in there called II/II analysis and SSES construction McLean funds. I'd like to understand what that is.
II, infiltration inflow. It's a condition that afflicts the sanitary sewer system. SSES is sanitary sewer evaluation survey.
Okay.
The sanitary sewer evaluation survey allows us to pinpoint the sources of II and allows us, at that point, to prepare a plan to address and mitigate the II.
And then what is it, what do you mean when it says McLean funds? Is this money that has been put aside from the McLean deal?
Yeah, the developments at McLean Hospital were required to make an II payment.
Okay.
That money will be used to help us mitigate. Once the sewer system evaluation survey is completed and we know where we want to target our efforts, the mitigation funds from the McLean developments will help us do that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure whether it had to do with roads. And I guess another question I have about roads, is the redoing, as I recall, when the McLean thing went through, there was some money set aside for traffic mitigation in the whole Waverly Square area. Is that...
Yeah, there was a traffic mitigation agreement. There were several items that were addressed in the agreement. Two items that were guaranteed were signalization at the New Olmsted Drive, which is constructed off of Pleasant Street, and then a widening of Pleasant Street along, I'm sorry, from Olmsted Drive to the Tripella Road Pleasant Street intersection.
Okay, so that...
If you have been down Pleasant Street recently, in the last few weeks, you'll notice that the widening effort has begun. The stone wall from Olmsted Drive to Tripella Road is in the process of being moved back 10 feet to allow for the widening. That was one of the traffic mitigation items that they were responsible for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other, Mr. Semuels?
Joel Semuels, town meeting member, precinct six. I noticed that there is the fire replace staff vehicle. What type of vehicle or what kind of vehicle is being purchased? And a second question would be, is there a town policy to replace vehicles with hybrids or other green-type vehicles if such a vehicle exists? Is there a priority for that, or is there a town policy for replacing vehicles with hybrids?
I'm going to ask the fire chief to answer the specifics on that particular vehicle. In terms of a policy, the town administrator and board of selectmen are working on that particular process, and Mr. Younger has assured us that that will be in place in time for next year's capital budget.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. David L. Frizzell, you're a fire chief. The vehicle that is being replaced ultimately is a 1998 Ford. We have done a very extensive research on looking at the different options that are available. I have prepared a 17-slide presentation, but given the hour of the night, I won't bore you with that. I'll run through just quickly. The first thing we need to do is meet the needs of our mission of providing the emergency services to the town. That requires what has been determined to be medium-large SUV. There is a substantial amount of equipment, specialized equipment, that is carried in that vehicle, which kind of narrows the field down of what we have to choose from. We have explored the options of alternative fuels, biofuel, being propane, CNG, compressed natural gas, the ethanol-based fuels, biodiesel, and last is hybrid. We've compared what's available right now. The only play, only one of those that has any potential viability is the CNG or the compressed natural gas field, which we have a filling location in Lexington on Route 128, so that's where we'd have to take that vehicle to get fueled. Most recently, I've even test-driven one, is a hybrid SUV that's made by Chevy. It is a very expensive automobile. It is a high-end automobile. You have two options: DVD player and a sunroof, leather, navigation, everything else comes with it. It adds about $24,000 to that figure that you see up there, and at this point, with the use of the vehicle, we can't justify spending an additional $24,000 because we will never save the fuel cost during its life. And the second part, I will leave to... Where did Tom go?
Mr. Jones?
In the absence of the town administrator, Ralph Jones, precinct two, and also a member of the board of selectmen, since I will be involved in developing this policy for the future, and I know there's a great interest in what we're doing in order to provide more green vehicles for the town, I can suggest one thing that I'm very interested in. The Mass Technology Council, working in combination with a firm in Watertown that is making the new lithium-ion batteries for making Toyota Priuses into plug-in hybrids, has begun to use a number of those vehicles for the state fleet, and I'm going to talk to them and see if we can get an idea whether or not we could get some of those plug-in hybrids for use for vehicles that only go around the town and do this in cooperation with our municipal light department, so.
Thank you. Mr. White, I'll entertain your motion now.
Mr. Moderator, Joe White, precinct four. I move that consideration of Article 10, this article, be postponed until after Article 20 has been disposed of. It's a little different than we and I saw you had some consultation, and they thought this was better. I mean, you can judge on that yourself.
Well, that's a different, yeah, no, that's a different motion.
I'll give you either one. I'll give you mine. How's that?
I liked yours.
Move to postpone Article 10 until Wednesday, 7:30, April 30, 2008, at this place. That's the one you approved.
Second.
Thank you.
If you would read that again, thank you. Yours.
Move to postpone Article 10 until Wednesday, 7:30 PM, April 30, 2008, at this place.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is debatable and a majority vote, any discussion on the motion? Take a vote, all those in favor, please.
Oh, excuse me. I was waiting for, see if anybody else wanted to speak before I spoke. I'm just thinking that this is an open town meeting. This town meeting member... Enough said.
I think you're on a roll, Joe, here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No!
The ayes have it. We'll reassemble at 7:30 Wednesday. Oh, I didn't move to adjourn? All right. Want to make a motion to adjourn?